Welcome to the October twenty twenty two, Walton City Council, where your council meeting. I'll go ahead and call the meeting's order, and screw up our pledge of peace. Let my council president, Brian.
So all join in.
The divisions to the land, the United States of America, material republic, religious stands, one nation, liberty, justice, law.
All right. That brings up us to our announcement, our re-announcement tonight is our public health announcement. And tonight it's also led by council president, Brian.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to mention, as many people already know, October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And as people may not know, the current statistics that they share with us is that 12% of women will be diagnosed with some type of breast cancer in their lifetime. And to give that a little bit of context, if you think about the groups that you work out with, your friends you go to lunch with, or happy hour, people you tailgate with, people in this room, for every eight of our friends we get together, one person is going to be, statistically speaking, one person could be diagnosed with breast cancer. So that's one out of eight women. So, you know, early detection is always a better outcome. Mammograms are fantastic. So please, one of the best things anybody can do, whether you're a man, woman, husband, brother, son, sister, mother, aunt, is ask the people that you love at least once a year, have you had your annual mammogram? And the best way to remember is always to try to schedule a new birthday month. Make it fun, you know, take a friend with you, go do something fun afterwards. It doesn't always have to be a drag. But early detection saves lives, early detection always gives the best treatment options out there. You know, be your own hero, save your own life. Schedule a mammogram, schedule a meeting with your doctor, and go. You know, don't be scared. This is your chance for yourself, you know, don't cheat yourself out of your own future by momentarily feeling a little bit scared about something. Be brave and seriously, be your own hero, save your own life, get out there and do that for yourself. And also by asking the women in your lives, if they've had their tests, you know, you have an opportunity to save someone else's life as well. So anyway, I just want to encourage everybody, please get checked, please put on a calendar, please don't forget, and give everybody some love. And thank you.
And I just also want to add to the public health announcement, thank you so much, council president Grimes for the reminder, and I know a lot of people because of COVID have skipped some of their testing because of concerns around being at the hospital. And now that we have the new vaccines and it's safer, hopefully people get back on their schedules that have been avoiding going to places to get tested. So, um, thank you for that. And then I just wanted to also announce that there's vaccines available for kids from five to 12, I think, and they just became available this last week. Not all places have them, but it's a really good time to schedule kids. If you're waiting for your kids to get vaccinated with a new vaccine, go ahead and schedule that so you can protect them during this this school year. And I know a lot of people had the flu and things like that. So during this time where there's a lot of that going around, thank you.
That brings us to public comment. A public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council regarding an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments for about three minutes. There's anyone here in this room or in the Zoom meeting who would like to address the council, this would be appropriate time. No one to call. All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items that are considered routine will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda items consist of seven items. Item number one, consideration of resolution number fifty six forty seven dash twenty two, awarding the contract for construction of the sixty fifth Nyberg Sanitary Sewer Trump Main Rehab Project. Item number two, consideration of resolution number five six four eight dash twenty two, awarding the contract for construction of the twenty twenty two Neighborhood Traffic Safety Project's Phase One Project, part of the Twalton Moving Forward Program. Item number three, consideration of resolution number fifty six forty nine dash twenty two, awarding the contract for construction of the B level water project. Item number four, consideration of resolution number fifty six fifty dash twenty two, authorizing the city manager to execute to execute collective bargain agreement with the Twalton Police Officers Association. Item number five, consideration of resolution number fifty six fifty two dash twenty two, to adopt the city of Twalton investment policy. Item number six, consideration of resolution number fifty six fifty four dash twenty two, awarding fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three outside agency grant funds to provide services to the Twalton community. And finally, item number seven, consideration for approval of a new liquor license application for Sunny's Diner. Would anyone like any of these items pulled off consent and heard later tonight?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as ably read by mayor. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on the motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. All right, that brings us to general business. Item number one, scheduling a public hearing on a petition for the vacation of right-of-way location at the east terminus of Myceloni Street.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. We need to bring before you the street vacation request. And this is for Myceloni Street. And if you've driven on TS Road, you've seen the two new buildings popping up just east of one twelve. And it's in conjunction with that, when we did land use, that we required the extension of Myceloni over to the UPS lot. Future connectivity, hopefully. So that is why we are looking to vacate the cul-de-sac bulb. So Steve put together a quick, brief PowerPoint, and he's going to walk you through the process. And we'll be back in two weeks with another presentation for the public hearing.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening again, mayor and councilor, Steve Koper, Assistant Development Director. So just a quick presentation, like Kim mentioned, a slide covering the council's legal authority to go through this, and then just the actual process itself. I've showed what Kim ably described, the proposed street vacation before and after. And then lastly, the direction that is requested this evening, and then next steps following that direction. So the street vacation process is governed by ORS chapter two seventy one. Just to kind of start out at the beginning, what does street vacation means for those of you that don't know is it's actually removing a portion of previously dedicated public street. And then the underlying property rights go back to the private property owners from which that street was dedicated. And so that could be an improved street, that could also be right-of-way that's been improved. In this case, it's actually improved right-of-way, the cul-de-sac bulb that Kim mentioned, and that I'll show on the next slide. So under ORS two seventy one, it allows the city to initiate the process. There's also a parallel process for property owners, but in this case, because of the reasons Kim mentioned, the city making the request of the property owner that they dedicate the extension, we've opted to go through the process and make it easier for them. So what we have to do is have a public hearing and then make appropriate notice. And that consists of that we have to notify the property owners. Obviously, in this case, they're aware of it. We have to notify public utility providers. There aren't any, but we'll do it just to have all of our docs in a row. And then in a newspaper of general circulation, two consecutive weeks prior to the hearing. And so the first one was published on the twentieth last Thursday, and the next one will be published on the twenty seventh. And then lastly, on the site with a posted notice made within five days of the first date of newspaper publication. And then at the public hearing, the city council must find that the public interest will not be prejudiced by the street vacation. That's just the language from the statute. Basically, what that means is that there's no adverse impacts to the property owners or anyone else who might be affected by it, the traveling public, so forth. And obviously, on the next slide, we'll show why that is, why we believe that is met. But if the council finds in favor of the proposed street vacation, then it would adopt an ordinance with the affected street vacation area included as an exhibit. And then adoption of that ordinance would actually affect the vacation. So on the left-hand side of the slide up here, you have the area of this of the street vacation, which is the Myceloni cul-de-sac bulb, as I mentioned, is existing and was built into basically the interior of the development site. That was the original proposal prior to the city's request to have Myceloni Street extended. As you can see, the applicant slightly reconfigured their site and their buildings in order to accommodate that. And so in particular, the cul-de-sac bulb, although some of it will be rededicated as right-of-way as part of that extension, the majority of that is necessary to be vacated to become part of the site landscaping, building, and so forth. So that's the the public need that I mentioned. And then I think you can obviously see the benefit of the extension to the traveling public is also there. And then, so lastly, the direction requested is we're requesting to proceed with the public hearing to consider the adoption of the ordinance. We're requesting November fourteenth is that hearing date. At the hearing, we would present a staff report similar to the information that you've received tonight. The council, similar to our quasi judicial hearings, would allow for public comment, rebuttal, and so forth. And then at the conclusion of the public hearing, the council would enter into deliberations. And then should it choose to do so, it could adopt the ordinance upon finding that the street vacation is in the public interest. And that concludes my brief presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
You have like anticipated increase of traffic through the area?
I, yeah, I wouldn't hazard a guess, but we could get that from the traffic impact study that was submitted with our application.
Thank you. Anyway, it sounds great.
Pretty rare, I don't remember ever seeing something like this in.
I don't like, yeah. I don't like to give right-of-way back, so. Once, once we get it, especially because they donated, but in this case, the swap was worth it because of what we get for the extension.
Motion to. Like miss, make a motion to approve the vacation of the right-of-way. Schedule the public hearing of the vacation of the right-of-way.
I got a motion and a second to approve the request to schedule a hearing for the vacation of the right-of-way. Any discussions on those motions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another item. The street's going away. Item number two, consideration of resolution number fifty six fifty three dash twenty two, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement, the acquisition of real property located at two, three, four, six, five Southwest Boones Ferry Road. Welcome, gentlemen, good to see you both again.
Good, good evening, mayor and council. We're bringing to you tonight a consideration of a purchase and sale agreement. We hear, this is from the Basalt Creek Planning Process, shows a trail system in Basalt Creek and identified approximately fifteen to twenty acres of parkland would be needed. The the piece in green is the Alstede property, which the city closed on Friday. So finished, escrow closed, and that is now city property. And that's just under an eight acre parcel. We have a willing seller on a parcel directly, the tax lot directly north of of this. It's a McLeod Trust. They're a willing seller, and we've been discussing the city's interest in purchasing for parkland. Some of the site attributes, again, like Alstede, we've got the big trees to the west. It goes down to the Wetlands Creek area, then up to flatter active possibly recreation closer to Boons Boons Ferry. Again, active recreation, natural area. It's right across the street from, again, Autumn Sunrise and the SEPA Affordable Housing Complex. And it aligns, we'll show you in a minute, with council visions and goals. There is a future access across Boons Ferry in close proximity to this parcel, just a bit south. And, um, yeah, it would expand with this piece. It would expand to fourteen acres, the two tax lots there. Here's the council visions and goal alignment. We're discussing inclusive gathering space, strengthening and sustaining neighborhoods, environmental, environmental sustainability. The current state, again, the property owners are interested in selling to the city. And what you're considering tonight is a purchase and sale agreement for this property. The purchase and sale agreement terms are for the price to be negotiated once an appraisal is finished. So once we get that certified appraisal, we'll, basically, the purchase and sale agreement says that that will be the purchase price, but that will need to come back to council for approval. And if council decides not to approve it, we would not need to move forward with the purchase. We're just giving you an idea on on the price. You can, you can see where, you know, as it sits right now, about a million dollars. Again, the appraisal, Alsteds was a little higher than what we projected because the appraiser looks at the best value. And that that could be future growth and and planning area changes and things like that. Here's a picture from the house looking towards Boons Ferry. You can see that flat active recreation area. And then a picture from the back of the house looking out to the Wetlands Creek area. And again, is this, yeah. That, that's the end of the property right here with the large trees. Again, the creek wetlands right here. And so with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Yeah, well, thanks for that question. And that just gives you an idea on what the value may be. The appraisal will actually, this will not be a range. The appraisal would be a specific dollar value. And they'll take into a number of factors, some of which were taken into to come up with those costs, but also the best value, so potentially future development or use of that property. So I I guess all we're saying is we expect it to be probably slightly higher than what you saw on the screen there.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very exciting to see this, and especially right where it is, and encapsulating the creek and right across from the affordable housing development. I just, first of all, wanna, when I look through your presentation and how you include the council vision and goals and how you take the the vision and goals that we have and make it into strategic planning in a really mindful, thoughtful way, I just really want to acknowledge your leadership and your department and how you both work together to to do such great work that way strategically and incorporating our our direction and our values in a policy way so mindfully and thoughtfully. So I just want to say thank you for that. That and your community engagement efforts have always been very remarkable to me and sticks out in my mind. The other thing I wanted to say about appraising is there's a couple of things. There may be, there's, we've seen in our business some of the first declining values that we've seen for a while. And there's also some issues around some of the computerized appraisal companies. There's some that are really facing some serious challenges because they're buying high and selling high, and they're not able to close. They've gotten to flipping, and they're not really great at it because their computer modeling is not doing what a person could do. So there, I'm not saying that the value is going to be lower than what Zillow or some of the others might be saying that they're going to be, but there may be a decent chance at that just because they have a track record, especially lately, of kind of overvaluing a little bit. Some of the companies, I'm not saying which one, but you can look at the newspaper. And so I just wanted, and I hope that that also something too for you, Councilor Reyes, to. But but the appraiser will come up with the thing. So I just want to throw that out there just because it's a big change in market compared to what we've seen over the last few, quite a few years, in something that is not consistent across the board at all, but in some places with larger larger acreage. So it's just something I've seen. Thanks.
I just have a comment. This is amazing how you've been able to piece together fourteen acres in this area that, you know, is one is so valued for its natural areas. Also, I've received some comments. I'm part of the Byram CIO, and folks there are not happy to see all the trees gone across Norwood from our community. So I think the timing of this is really great. And I've let community members know, you know, about the first parcel. So this is going to be great that I can go back to these folks, let them know that they'll go from six acres to fourteen, hopefully. And so I just, you know, congratulate you for a job, and I'm really excited about this and I hope we can, we can acquire this land.
That's President Grimes.
Thank you. And thank you for sharing, Councilor Sacco, because you just reminded me of something that I was thinking about over the weekend. I just really want to acknowledge landowners that are selling to the city and the very thoughtful, creative, compassionate way that they have thought about their property and their land and the legacy that they're going to leave in this community by, you know, approaching the city and working with us and coming up with a really creative, thoughtful, you know, way for us to take over the, take over the land and turn it into something fantastic for the community. And I just really want to acknowledge, you know, the landowners, not only on this particular parcel, but the one immediately north of it. God willing, that works out. And it would be great to maybe invite them to a council meeting or, you know, somehow publicly acknowledge, you know, what they were doing. And rather than just, you know, putting the property on the market, taking the highest best offer, which, you know, no fault, but that's what, you know, most people do. I just thought it would be nice to, you know, kind of acknowledge your partnership with us and the thoughtful thing that they're doing for the community at large. I know, I would love to thank them because this is a huge gift in a way that they're giving us.
That's Ryan.
Yeah, thank, um, thank you, Councilor Grimes, actually, just put a thought in my head. After we purchased, I know that we are not, we have to follow the ex parte, you know, not to, not to kind of go in there and. A city council, that kind of, you know. That's not, okay.
Yeah, you can go look at it.
Oh, I can go look at it, okay. I just didn't want to break any, I didn't want to break any laws or anything like that, or rules or guidelines. I was thinking we can go and take a picture of it and just sort of, once we purchase the land and all that, and just celebrate. But that's what I was thinking, like, can we go see it now or not? Because I know there was a, a time when we couldn't see certain things. All right, thank you.
I can just share to both your questions and comments. One, the the Alstede family would very much, I sure would appreciate coming to a council meeting and actually have been at council meetings remotely. However, I think they would, they would probably love to come to come meet all of you as well as potentially hosting city representatives on their property, which is now city property. And, um, and yes, and absolutely, I think what we have seen in our conversations with with both landowners, the one we have closed and the and the one potentially we're now entering into a PSA with, is a genuine desire for the the land that they have stewarded to be continued to be stewarded by the public and for the the future children and residents and current residents of the Basalt Creek area to enjoy the property as a as a publicly owned park and natural area. So we certainly heard that from both of them.
I make a motion to approve resolution number fifty six fifty three dash twenty two, authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the acquisition, acquisition of the real property at two, three, four, six, five Southwest Boons Ferry Road. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution fifty six fifty three dash twenty two. This is the resolution on general business. We'll have to do a roll call, but are there any questions before we take a roll call? Comments? Councilor Sacco.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
And President Grimes.
Aye.
And the chair votes, I also, it's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Is there any tie-in with this with Metro dollars? I always get confused about where all the paths are.
Certainly, yeah, we can, we can explain sort of how this has come together thus far. The Alstede property, the the property to the south, further to the south, was purchased almost exclusively by Metro local share grant dollars from the two thousand nineteen Metro Parks and Nature Bond. And that, when that totaled around one point six million. The city contributed from Parks STCs approximately five hundred thousand, a little bit under. And and so that constituted the 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 purchase sort of makeup, funding makeup for that Alstede property. For future potential purchases, including the the PSA that you just approved, we we did spend the entirety of our local share dollars on the Alstede property. So the funding sources available for Metro are are more limited. And we know Parks STC dollars with new residential, with new business commercial development coming in, there's, there's funding for that infrastructure from from Parks STCs. And so that's the intent, would be the intent to, and and you would need to authorize that source if if and when we have a mutually signed PSA to bring back to you.
Thank, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
We had none. Now it's council communications, any communications, councilors? Council Brooks.
I have a lot of communications, so I'm just going to quickly go through. I want to, first of all, acknowledge the team, I guess it would be Mike McCarthy and the rest that are doing all the work on Boons Ferry Road near my house, where they've been taking out this really bumpy bike path that all the trees had destroyed and were, and that's the thing that we did, that we created all the extra dollars from the transportation bond. And they're putting in this really brand-new shiny sidewalk that looks amazing from. I haven't seen a close-up yet, but it looks amazing. So thank you for that. I want to see that the police department's hosting a drug take-back on the twenty ninth of October from ten to two. I'll be there. I may have some flyers about the Parks Bond with me and some Tony dogs. So come say hello and bring back, clean out your cupboards and bring back that old stuff. I wanted to say happy homecoming. I wanted to say happy homecoming. I know they had to reschedule the game. And part of the reason why is that there's been a lack of referees, and you have to go through a class. So if anyone out there watching has any interest in roughing the, officiating the football games for the high schools, I know that there's a need. And check into what the training requirements are. And they had their dance, so happy homecoming to them. And I think that this, they had it canceled because of smoke. I'm not going to go into the environment every time, but here we are. And so I just want to remind people that this Friday is the homecoming parade, even though they played the game already. And then the ribbon cutting for Bella Two, hosted again by the Chamber, is this Wednesday. We are going to be in costumes, except for maybe our mayor, but I might have a hat for you. So, and a lot of us might be pirates. So come over to Bella Two. It's great pizza. And, you know, in the morning, they have wonderful croissants, and it's just a really great place on the commons. And welcome to them. They've been great partners already with the Twelton Sustainability Network in the city and did a great job. I thought the first pumpkin regatta, which is a lot to handle for new business. Then I want to say that the book club's coming up and other, I've been doing a lot of the Oneida Poll Center classes, speaking of parks, they're just amazing classes, really innovative and different than we think of the old-fashioned senior center activities. So I invite everyone to, we're just ending the series of classes, so it's time to sign up for new classes. So if you're interested in checking out, like me, I do Tai Chi and yoga over there. That's really great. There's all kinds of trips that are going on, and they're even taking trips beyond the, the day trips to a new series of trips outside of the area, like vacation trips. So take a look at that and sign up now. Also, on the 29th, after I'm over at the drug take-back, I'll be going over to the library for the Day of the Dead celebrations they're having at 2:00 PM. And then we have Halloween coming up. And then I just want to remind people to sign up for the Veterans Breakfast, and I will see you there if you come. And finally, I want to just take a moment of personal privilege to, I've been doing a lot of canvassing and walking and have earned a lot of trust and support from the community and to thank the community for all the support in me running. And encourage everybody, whether you're voting for me or not, to make a plan to vote and make sure your voice is heard. And our voting day is November 8th, and we'll have one more council session before the 7th. But it's just a good reminder to, to make a plan. And you can drop off your ballots. It saves money if you drop off the ballots at the ballot box still, but you can also drop it in mail now. And that's it for me. Thank you for your patience.
Councilor Sacco.
Just one note on voting on the 8th. There's a very important bond measure, 34317 on, on the ballot. And I voted today. It was really easy, drove through the library. So yes, get out there and vote by the.
I just have two. My phone exploded on Friday. Hopefully, you've heard about this, with Mayor Wheeler's proposition about how to address houselessness in Portland. While his plans are great for Portland, there is tremendous concern because one of his proposals that they aren't, isn't launching right away is eventually he wants to renegotiate the percentages of the supportive housing dollars that go out to the region. He is saying that 70 to 80% of the houseless homeless folks are in Oldham County and the city of Portland. So he would like to have Metro reallocate the dollars, basically 70, 80% of those dollars to Oldham County. As you can imagine, the Washington County mayors, the Washington County chair lost their minds over this. Council President Peterson pulled me aside this morning at the R-Tech about this. So this is to come, but we need to keep our eyes and ears open. I definitely feel for Mayor Wheeler and want to help out regionally on the issues that are affecting Oldham County and Portland and the whole region. But the other two counties are banking on these dollars for future projects, and we can't have a change in the game. As, as far as I remember, I think the percentages were baked into the ballot measure. So. We'll have to see, but keep your eyes and ears open for that because there's a version 1.0, got unanimous support, which is rare in Portland City Council. You'll be coming back with how they're going to pay for all this soon. And my second thing is, I just want to, my wife is watching right now. It's her 30th anniversary. So she's been super patient about me coming here tonight, heading back for cake and champagne, but love you, Donna, and happy 30th.
Hi, Donna. Happy anniversary.
We'll have a move to adjourn.
So move. You gotta go home.
We'll see you in two weeks.